Okay, as we continue forward, we are at item 3.03 and I'll kind of tie in 004 with that because we'll first get a brief update. I know the committees only had not to meet once. We'll get a brief update on where the Budget Advisory Committee's work is. But as we move forward from that to the five-year outlook, let me stress again what our objectives are. And one is to, one, clearly see the picture of our needs and these vital areas of our work that are noted here in this section. And then to begin to look closely at the essential needs as indicated by the administration for second year of the strategic plan, second year Phase One, upcoming school year. What's essential for this year and then how we begin to prioritize all of these items as we look out over the next four to five years. That's where we want to land. I think it's also important that we include in our conversation, and I know this is not the, you know, end-all, be-all for this budget conversation, but we have to begin talking about cost savings, cost savings as well. Over the last couple of years, we've talked a little bit about program analysis to really look at some of those programs that we may have had for a couple of years. Are we getting the bang for our buck in those? Are there some cost-saving areas there? Programs that's been around for a number of years that are either not being used or are not being used, or we're not getting the outcomes that we need from them. And quite frankly, any other areas that we can look at for either cost sharing or cost savings. Having said that, turn it over to Sam for comments and then the team that will present. Let me also say, though, that a lot of the numbers speak for themselves and so I don't want to, you know, stay up the field of burden of having to give a lot of explanation on the obvious. Sam?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, I would just like to echo what Chair already stated in terms of we are now facing the challenge of taking a look at where we are with our Year Two implementation of the strategic plan as well as those things from Year One that could possibly roll into Year Two. And the challenge is to determine which items will rise to the level of priority and considering those things that are going to give us the greatest movement around student achievement and needs for children. And so with that said, I won't go long. Your notion, I'd defer to Dr. Thornton to begin.
All right. Thank you, Dr. King. Chairman Houston, School Board members, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first order of business, Mr. Chairman, is an update on the work of the Budget Advisory Committee. As you know, the first meeting of the Budget Advisory Committee was held following the presentation of then-Governor McDonald's proposed budget to the General Assembly. We thought it was important to hold off on that first meeting until after we had a more realistic picture of what our budget challenges were going to be based on our state revenue projection. We did have that meeting on January the ninth. Your School Board Representative was Ms. Doyle and she was able to attend that meeting and we appreciated her presence there. Really what we wanted to do in that first meeting by way of a PowerPoint and also just some conversation was to provide the group, because many of the individuals that are serving are, this is not their day-to-day work. So we want to provide them with an overview of orientation of the budget, where we are, what the budget looks like, what are some of the major costs in the budget, what our major revenue sources are. So we were able to do that. We also shared with the committee the estimated state revenue picture that we had previously shared with the board about two days earlier in your School Board meeting. And then we also identified for the committee the projected budget gap or planning deficit that we were projecting, which was in the range of fifteen to twenty million dollars. Then we shared with the committee that what we would do going forward in our next meeting, which was scheduled for January the 21st. Unfortunately, it had to be canceled because of weather. And then we had a third meeting scheduled for this, yesterday, January the 29th.
Today, actually.
For today, actually. Thank you, Ms. Doyle. For today, January the 30th, which obviously had to be postponed because of weather. What we were going to do in those two meetings that we've had to cancel was share with the group a set of potential, I'll reiterate, potential budget reduction strategies. Considering that right now we didn't expect to receive any additional revenue, how could we close that fifteen, minimum fifteen million dollar gap? Because what I found is that when you're working with committees like this, because it's not their day-to-day work, it's somewhat challenging to start from scratch in terms of identifying opportunities for reductions. So we were going to provide to the group, as we did to the board last year, a set of potential budget reduction or budget gap closing strategies that would ideally keep the negative impact away from day-to-day classroom instruction. That was going to be looking at non-school-based operating budgets as we did last year and probably as we've done the last four or five years. We would also look at current state of vacancies, what those vacancies are. Are there any opportunities to eliminate those positions going forward? We would also look at central office budgets to determine, as we did last year, what level of reduction we can incur again for probably the third or fourth consecutive year reductions in central office. And then finally, considering the magnitude of a fifteen million dollar gap following three or four years of similar gaps and reductions, what would we need to do to continue to address that fifteen million dollar reduction? Again, found that it's important to give a committee like this that framework around which to work. And we would give them options to consider. We would explain some of the advantages, disadvantages, and potential short-term impacts and some of the potential long-term impacts. That's what we're planning to do the next time we meet. But obviously, we are three weeks away from the presentation of Dr. King's budget, so we need to be very diligent and efficient in that work going forward. The cabinet is well aware of where we are in the budget process and that we need to make some very difficult choices around which the committee can respond, discuss, and share their thoughts as well. So with that being said, that's the work that the committee has done to date.
And as we roll out that work and move closer to the superintendent's proposed budget, I think it's important that we continue to look at, and Rodney mentioned this last year, the cuts over the past four to five years, which have really been major, major cuts and impacts. I mean, in our first discussion over at Lake Taylor, one of the things we talked about, I T R T, you know, literacy teachers. We cut a great deal of security guards. And so enough for the board to really do its work. I think we need to see all of these numbers in context because it'd be really easy for us to recommend cutting in some area where we don't realize that we've cut deeply in that particular area over the past four or five years. So having that as a part of the picture would give us, I think, a greater level of context. Okay? Any questions or comments on the update? Okay. Then we're ready to move on with 3.04, with the five-year budget outlook. And we'll start with the safety nets and enrichment and move accordingly.
Well, I'll just give a very quick synopsis from a budgetary perspective. We established in the base budget this year approximately $500,000 to support safety nets and enrichment for those kids that were demonstrating challenges and then also enrichment for those kids that we wanted to try to continue to raise the ceiling for. So that is in the current base budget. So any other discussion beyond the fiscal aspects of it, I'll turn over to my colleagues.
You said 500,000?
Yes, that's in the current base budget.
Right. So as we look at next fiscal year?
Yes.
Is there anticipation for a need for more than that for 14, 15, for safety nets and enrichment?
Programmatically, I defer to my colleagues.
I'll open and then I'll, of course, ask any of the team members to make comments. We feel that it is important, number one, with the 500,000, to make sound decisions about how we roll it out in terms of the needs of the individual schools linked to the needs of children based on their elementary standards. You all heard us say that. And I think we get better and better each day with doing that. Because if you are addressing those deficiencies, then you are being efficient about how you utilize those funds. The next piece that's important for us will be the same concept through the utilization of the SIG grants and the approaches that we have with planning for schools that receive those dollars, that we continuously improve the laser-like focus on getting the results based on how we invest those dollars. So with that said, I would ask members of the team to talk a little bit about that in terms of how we feel the appropriate utilization of SIG dollars along with the 500,000 will position us.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Let's clarify again what we hope to accomplish by the end of this budget discussion. Can we do that?
Sure. So, well, number one, we want to be able to see clearly what we believe will be the budget priorities, essential needs for the upcoming year.
Okay.
Then secondly, that we are able to prioritize the other items at least over the next four years as we are moving on to the second year of the five-year strategic plan. Okay? So as we get those big dollar items, technology, so on and so forth, we're able to say, okay, what do we need this year, next year, following year, so we can begin to see the five-year budget outlook. Does that make sense? So just one quick question on the safety nets and enrichment, and that's two parts to this question. One, what are the major cost drivers in that category? And what I mean by that is, is professional development in there? Are we talking about more time such as teachers after school, working with the students for safety nets and enrichment? What are the major cost-driving factors associated with it? And then, two, is this an appropriate use of Title I money for those particular areas?
Well, the majority of our safety net money is associated with staff. We have those students who are pulled and enriched in small group sessions with teachers, part-time teachers, tutors, before school, during the school day, after school, on Saturdays, every way that we can lay hands on the buildings and build that into their safety net plans. So we feel comfortable and confident with the way that the money is being used this year. The executive directors work very closely with building administrators to monitor that and monitor the implementation of that. The second part of that in regard to Title I is that safety net money is given to all schools at the district level. So for us to, we have to be very careful when we start utilizing Title I money versus district money so that we don't fall into this plant and grass area.
Right, right.
So it makes me uncomfortable to link those two together when the district provides that 500,000 dollars for all schools.
Okay. So those are planning certainly would be out of order. But supplementing, well, illegal, yeah. Excuse my euphemism.
All right.
But, but, but for Title I schools that qualify for the use of the money?
Separate of the 500,000 dollars.
Yes.
Two different costs.
Right.
Understand that clearly.
Yeah, I was about to make a comment. You have built the safety net plans for every school. These are district plans and then the executive director's, who are playing. Now, sometimes the safety net plans are more complicated than what the specific safety net funds have been offered out, such as the SOL combination. But these safety net funds usually target specific combinations like Tier Two students who do not meet certain goals of SOLs. And they will craft a program for these students during the school day and after school. Safety net funds often are used to pay for tutors, for teachers to remain after school. When schools have hired higher teachers who come on board during the day to provide combination to the schools. So that's basically how these safety net funds are being used.
Well.
But an answer to the Title I funding, yes, every school that qualifies for Title I funding receives Title I funding. And the principal does a needs assessment based on if you need needs of their building and grasp that claim specific to the needs of their building. So some principals did build in some type of additional support for the Tier Two and Tier Four students within the Title I dollars. You just have to remember that that money from that approach.
Gotcha.
In relation to the 500,000 dollars, the schools that do receive the Title I funding, that could go towards safety nets. About how much do you think that is maybe per school, let's say at an elementary level? Do you think it's roughly 500,000 per school or?
It depends on the enrollment of their students. School for Title I wants to save those people a lot. And it's based on the percentage of students who qualify for Title I. There's also another factor. It's a complicated one. So it varies. The smaller schools receive anywhere from 100,000. Where the largest award this past year was close to 500,000. So it varies based on student enrollment, this qualifying student.
And do those funds incorporate the interventionist?
The math interventionist and reading specialist?
Not the math and reading, but the Title I interventionist.
If the principals opt to use the Title I funds to hire additional staffing, then yes. But that is a building-by-building decision. Each principal determines how he or she utilizes the Title I funds based on the needs assessment for their building.
So what I'm hearing is that right now the projected need for safety nets and enrichment upcoming year, let's say 15, is 500,000. And four-year outlook, 500,000 per year. Yes? Okay.
What was the five-year outlook for you?
Same, same amount. Okay.
Just following the process. So the 500,000 dollars that we did last year produced X results. Not sure what those results are, but we're saying that another 500,000 dollars will continue. The results that we're seeing are going to exponentially increase. I mean, how do you all tie the need to the outcome? And this is what I'm trying to go with, that's what I'm trying to say.
I would say as we get better with the work, I mean, you're looking at enrollment continuing. We expect enrollment to continue or increase. Then looking at what we currently serve, then that justifies the 500,000 over, you know, the period of time. But as we get better with the work, which we, all educators show that we are getting better with the work, we should see increased academic achievement. So that helps us in terms of the floor. But then it transfers to raising the ceiling. So we're going to still need the money for safety nets in order to raise the floor and ceiling at the same time.
Just as you respond, so like last year, we were looking at the work plan and had baseline and targets and other things. I'm just trying to get a sense of, do we meet our targets? Are we behind our targets? And then when you all determine how much you need, is that a result of us being on target or not? I guess that's what I'm just trying to get, the qualitative piece that is attached to the figure that they were discussing.
Well, the analysis is done based on the individual schools. And so there's a total of 500,000. However, each school submits its plan to the executive director and it's linked to the needs of the school, which is linked to the needs of students. And so the previous year, safety nets were rolled out in that way. So that was somewhat of a new phenomenon for all. However, from that, we saw some indicators that reflected that students would begin to master elements of the standard moving forward. Of course, we have to take into consideration the change in the assessments and all those things. But then you take a look at where we started with the diagnostics this year. And then X amount of teaching takes place and then you do your comparative assessments. That data is used to determine the type of safety net that should be implemented. But to go back to your question, then you look at the pool of students from the previous year that moved into the next grade. And you chart their growth. And then when you invest in the next level of safety net, it's to take them to the next point. So it extends the student from where they were the previous year to the current year and then looking forward. So it's incremental in terms of how you should implement. And there are some examples in this executive director could speak to this, where some schools did a better job than others with the results from those kinds of interventions. But in my view, from an aerial standpoint, that would be because some schools did a better job of aligning their safety net intervention to the deficiencies of the student rather than just doing a blanket safety net rollout. So to analyze how we use those dollars and ensuring that we get the bang for the buck, it's us to continue to train the principals to be able to gauge and analyze how it's used. And then executive directors holding those principals accountable to mature, but that's what we're doing. And so that's the intent.
So if I could just comment on two things. One, I'll speak on behalf of Warren since he's not here. But what he's going to call in, what he's going to do is speak to the document that he shared with me and I've made copies of. And I wanted to pass this around because what it does is it outlines by year, in Excel spreadsheet, what he was interested in looking at from the priorities of the operating budget, capital improvement and others. So as we talk about, for instance, what safety nets are going to cost, which is 500 this year and 500 for subsequent, this could be kind of a worksheet probably is what he intended frankly to look at, that we could put this in this worksheet format so we could really see a full picture of what everything's going to cost us from years out. So he shared this with me and asked me to share this with you. So I'm speaking from him, but I do know he's obviously shared this with us before. So this is exactly what he had in mind and he has now laid it out in Excel format. So that's the Warren store comment. Does anybody have any questions on that document?
Yes. So.
But I can answer it for saying, but.
July, August, September.
Oh, July, August, September.
Yeah, it's the 12 school months.
You got it with Jason, you got it with Jason D.
Yeah, it's the 12 school months of the year. So we were just talking about safety nets. I put down 500 for 14 and then 500 for the year subsequent. So this is again how he was trying to help us visualize how we could look at this moving forward so that we can understand what the comprehensive costs are. Okay. So Courtney Doyle's question is, back to safety nets. Where are items like My Access and Achieve 3000 paid out of?
The operating budget.
The operating budget, not associated with this at all?
Not associated.
With safety nets?
No, no. Except for, that was an initiative for this year's base budget. When we, year one, when we implemented and procured My Access and Achieve 3000, we used some monies from a prior year.
Right.
So we built the current year's budget. We had to build in that ongoing annual service charge or annual maintenance and service agreement into the base budget. So for that new expense for this year, My Access and Achieve 3000 totaled approximately about 700 combined as an annual cost. And then obviously, as you go forward in out years, you're going to have incremental increases to it. So it's in the base for this year for the first time with 700,000 and then it will incrementally adjust going forward.
But we use those tools, elements as part of the safety nets as well? Is that true? Yes. Right. So they're incorporated in the safety net deliberately?
So, okay. So if there was a particular category that would fall in, in the operating budget, what I'm hearing is wouldn't fall necessarily under safety net category, but maybe programs?
How do you assess and research on that?
Safety nets costs 500,000. On top of that, Achieve 3000 and My Access costs an additional 700,000. So safety nets primarily support the staffing related to providing those additional instructional opportunities for kids. The software fee for My Access and Achieve 3000 is an additional 700,000, whether it's being used to support safety nets or in the day-to-day normal school instructional teaching learning process.
Okay.
Three separate costs.
Then there's supplies. Is it, there's a flooding stream you provide for supplies to be described? I remember feeling like where I was one day and someone was talking about, I guess they have to pay for copies now or something. So the question I had is, are we finding that safety net money is also being used for supply money because the supply money is going down? Can you just describe how the supply piece works?
Based on the way that the individual principals, based on their requests, the way the fund for safety nets have been allocated, I would say just looking at it, probably at least 90% of each school's allocation is going toward personnel services to support those enrichments and safety nets. You know, they may have some very small incremental instructional materials, but the bulk of it is going to direct, to pay those teachers to provide those services.
But in terms of supplies, is that something that we need to pay attention to as far as is there a gap in terms of the demand that they need to support the success of their building versus what we may have appropriated in the past?
I would say based on the short period of time I've been here, I have not received any significant requests. I can't think of a request from any particular school that needed more of non-personnel-related support. Many will say that we need more people, but I haven't heard, I haven't received a request for additional supplies and/or instructional materials. And I don't know if executive directors have heard that from your principals.
The issue is in supplies.
Are you considering paper part of supplies?
Copier fees and things of that nature. You may have some, again, I have not received any requests from either executive directors or directly from principals. Some principals will call you as well. For any of those non-personnel-related supplies or copier materials or supplies, what we'll find is that at each school, they have different practices for how they utilize copies and other reproduction of things. Some have some very strict rules governing that at their individual school level. And then others may be a little looser with it and perhaps may find themselves three-quarters of the way through the academic year needing some other support. But they don't come to us at this point asking for that. They'll find it within their existing budgets.
Okay. All right. No further questions. We'll move on to PD.
You received via board docs the five-year projection in regard to the identified needs for the school system over the next five years. And these are very loose projections, projections based on what we believe these trainings and opportunities for staff that costs today. I'm just trying to kind of estimate that out over the next five years. We'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have regarding to this. We did build it from what. We did build it from what we needed perspective moving forward.
And and again, just if we were to look at the total five year cost based on what Dr. Sevigny just described, do the math divided by five, it's approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year. And what has been identified as additional professional development needs. Also within that, Dr. Sevigny and her team have identified additional staffing professionals to to deliver, coordinate, and direct whatever professional development initiatives go forward. So it's a combination of, I guess, Dr. Sevigny can speak to this, personnel as well as bringing in outside resources and also attending different conferences and workshops.
Thank you, I did forget to mention that. We every time we come together and discuss needs in regard to where we are, it the same conversation always emerges in regard to professional learning. So there's a very clear need and a very deep need for us to have very focused and intentional professional learning across the district. Unfortunately, right now, there's not any one person who is responsible for the coordination and implementation of professional learning. It's divided between many individuals based on the program or the group of employees by which the need is identified. So what we are requesting is to have one person serve as the professional learning coordinator for the district whose sole responsibility will be to coordinate and act as the hub, so to speak, for all of that training as well as deliver some of that training in addition to adding some staff members to help support that. So we have more boots on the ground, so to speak, in regard to literacy and literacy.
Is that a a new position or some that you create within the exit, the current structure?
There it would be a a new position that we would have to post. There may be someone who is currently employed with us who would who would want that position, but it would be a new position.
Any questions or comments on our professional development? Noah?
My feeling with professional development is that I would like to see some projected outcomes associated with professional development. I I have no doubt that it's needed, that it's beneficial for the teachers. But in order to justify costs, I think we need to say, you know, with this professional development, we expect, you know, increase in academic achievement linked to this number. Or we expect to, you have on here, some of these are really easy, increase the number of reading and math specials by twenty five. And then what are we going to do to keep the teachers that we give instruction to within our district?
Well, currently with the the cohort programs that we have or the partnerships that we have with universities, then there is a tuition support that we do for that in terms of paying part of the tuition for to the universities. Those teachers have to sign an agreement indicating that they will continue to work with us for so many years upon completing the training or the degree or the endorsement or the certification add on. And I and I will tell you that we do have outcomes associated with all of these, but we didn't include it because it was my understanding and directive we received was specific to the budget, not the outcome, so we can certainly add that for you. Because we always plan at the end in mind, so we have to know what we want when we're planning.
Were these posted on the docs?
So first professional development?
Right, the 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 professional development and the pre-K and the CTE.
What's the date? This was posted on while we were in Richmond Conference.
Each one?
I'm looking at it.
No, it's on now.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know there's some some things fell off. It seemed like some documents fell off, and then I refreshed everything again this morning.
No, it was first posted while we were in.
I would just like to say that this is my first time looking at this, the pre-K piece and the CTE piece.
Yeah, I would agree. I just asked Rodney, I wrote the same note, when were these posted? Because I am seeing them now for the first time. I saw IT and make facilities, but I had not seen the additional ones.
I think they may have been there briefly. It seemed like when the agenda changed, the docs dropped, and then this morning it showed up again. So it may have been a brief snapshot in time, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, but yeah, I've seen it for the first time too. But I have a question related to that receipt. With the, I guess, the professional development in general, and then I see the transformations specific professional learning. One of the things that I think we've talked about in the past is school by school. We know that some schools have teachers with fewer years of service, which doesn't necessarily mean that they're not, you know, highly prepared. But we just talked about the difference between schools as far as the readiness of the teacher in the classroom to deliver at the rigor that you are recommending that that they deliver. And so I'm a little, if you if you kind of average all that out, and that's why it it kind of breaks out the way it is, then then that's fine. But I think I would feel a little more comfortable if I could have an understanding outside of the theme related professional development. What's the professional development that centered around the cycle for results and other things that we talked about earlier? You know, the laser light focus and those things. How do we see that? Because up above the transformation, it just, everything just kind of boils down to seventy two hundred dollars or twenty five thousand dollars or whatever the whatever the number is. And all of these schools are rolled up together. But as far as the strategic planning and our board priorities, giving at least some initial specific focus to those schools who are in school improvement or those schools who may be right on the bubble. Can we talk about and describe or give me some comfort level that embedded in here is some additional support around professional development for those hard to staff schools and those schools in school improvement and those schools that we talk about regularly that I hear you all say need to add to add to support?
Sure. We, and I want to remind everyone that right now we have taken all the boots on the ground that we have and circled the wagon, so to speak, around our focus and priority and our bubble schools for for right now. And Valerie Ford and her staff and the teacher specialist and reduction specialist are in those buildings every day. So the staff that we currently have are implementing those types of trainings today. The trainings that are listed or the professional learning that's listed on here is in addition to what we already have. So these are the things that we need in addition to what we already have. So this is a layer on top of what we're already doing for those particular schools. And because we don't have staff members who are devoted specifically to professional learning, the only folks who are getting our concentrated effort right now are those focus and priority and a few of those bubble schools. We don't have the staffing to spread out across district wide to focus on these identified needs.
And what you currently have is sufficiently staffed and resourced. You feel sufficiently staffed and resourced?
Sufficiently is such a tricky word.
I know, that's why I'm asking. I just want I just want to make sure that we talk about safety nets and these things. We talk about these schools and we talked about it before, that you all feel comfortable really telling us what you need to make a nine jump to a seven. So if you give us this, we're going to make the assumption that you're telling us this is what you need. And I just want to make sure that you're on the same page with that.
Thank you for that. We believe very strongly that in addition to what we currently have, because we don't want to take anything away from what we have, that layering this on top of that will get us to where we need to be.
Does this professional development also include that which we would need for gifted teachers?
Yes, there that's one of the areas in here, yes. And that actually has already started. We have that partnership with William &amp; Mary, and it maybe it's next Saturday it begins. It might be behind now Saturday because of the weather.
And they don't need, in the email that you sent, once they're gifted, certified, they're gifted certified, they don't really need any extra?
No, it adds on to their certificate, and they carry it for the life of their certificate.
All right.
So we're sending them six hundred thousand dollars. This this document is stating that we basically need six hundred thousand dollars for year one, two, three, four. I know it's broken down here, but basically if we spread it out, it's six hundred thousand dollars.
That's all of what we already have.
Right, so not taking away.
Yeah, don't take anything away, adding to.
All right, so we're ready to move on to facilities maintenance and academy improvement. Come on. You go, Rex. Kept seat warm for you. Okay. You're not supposed to do wardrobe on here.
You're good, man. I just want you to know this lives forever on YouTube.
Oh, I understand. I understand. First of all, I guess, I think most of you know that the report you see before you is not the initial report that Dr. Stewart requested.
Right, he wanted.
All right, so the initial report, the initial report did not have numbers, okay?
Right.
And then I was advised that you all would probably want to know what kind of cost we were looking at.
Yeah, this is great.
So we provided it.
Yep.
And I'm sure as you've seen, we've provided a legend for improved maintained other for the X, which represents routine maintenance. And if you all had a chance to look at this report, I think the best way for me to respond to it is to see if you have any questions.
Okay.
All right.
All right, can I just start?
So we could start right with high schools or wherever you want to start.
So that's actually where I was going to start. So mooring clearly six point six to do the repair, should we? And then otherwise, new construction FY fifteen, you're estimating a fifty eighth as an estimate you came up with?
Right, and that's just today's estimate, and that's just to rebuild what we have. It doesn't even include this one. It's just a high school at that current square footage.
And the six point six is what we know before going in there.
Just the repair of the bowling.
Yeah, six point six is what we need for the exterior restoration, and that's without uncovering any unforeseen condition.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
And you said the fifty eighth doesn't include, the pool doesn't include tearing and.
Doesn't even include demolition, just a new school.
Okay.
And of course, I think that you all know if you wanted to renovate the existing school, it's going to cost much more than that fifty eight million. Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Courtney, I have a lot of questions.
Go ahead, do you want to ask about high school? Keep going.
Can I ask a dramatic question before you go in the detail there? So everything we have on here, these are considered, we must do. These are, what we're looking at is your assessment of what must be done in order to meet the priority around safety and climate and so forth.
Right, these are all items that we that we need to do. And of course, as you might know, we receive that annual CIP funding to make some of these repairs, okay? So what? Excuse me.
The CIP funding is three months?
Yes.
Per year?
Per year.
But just for clarity, we're saying if these things are not done, then they will harm, hinder, damage, whatever the appropriate word is.
We don't make these repairs or replacements, then we're stuck with just having to patch our way along.
That's a different thing. I want to make sure that you're saying that we need to do these things in order, if we don't do these things, there's going to be a negative impact on student achievement and the common which our teachers and others operate.
Yes, sir.
Jackson, leave him with it. He's not hostile, though.
Good for you.
Rex, is anything on this already underway that you're using CIP for?
No, not on not on the list that I provided here. Everything that's underway, I didn't put on this list.
Okay, so this is all new moving forward?
All new. And as you might notice, wherever we place the X, we're just talking about routine maintenance that comes from daily operations. Okay, Noah?
I guess my questions aren't specific to this document, but I was wondering if we could get an update on where we stand right now with the five schools in construction. I know that there was some interviews done in the past couple of days regarding the PPEA contract, and I was wondering what were some of the outcomes of that interview process? And where do we stand as far as timeline goes with going through with the five year construction?
We are still in the middle of interviewing PPEA contractors, and so we have interviewed two. There is one more interview that will occur tomorrow. And then on next Tuesday, we will be making a determination for selection. We are still on the same current timeline for completion of the schools. We want to maintain the very same schedule, that will not change.
Do we do we have the latest version of what that schedule is? Would you mind just emailing it to me that would be?
I will email you our anticipated schedule before we start at the PPA process. There might be a slight modification, but we have heard in the interviews, for example, I can tell you that I've asked a question. Can we maintain the same schedule? I've been told yes by the groups we've interviewed so far.
Yeah, and I I guess that begs the question, which schedule?
Um, the.
I mean, because I think the original schedule called for demolition of Camp Estella.
Now. But the. Right, the demolition of the demolition of Camp Estella, we're betting whether that's going to be an outside piece or whether that's going to be folded into the PPA process. So when I say schedule, we're talking about Camp Estella, a move in twenty fifteen, January.
Sixteen, January.
Sixteen, I'm sorry, twenty sixteen, January.
That would be very ambitious.
Yeah, I'm always ambitious.
I would add that one of the contingencies on the schedule that may be out of our control is where the city is with their debt capacity and their debt service model. So wherein the contractor is going to be flexible, the city is going to have to weigh in on how they will be able to fund incrementally the debt service associated with bringing these buildings on line, starting the construction and completing it. The idea is to stay within the spirit of the timeline. But ultimately, the city's cash flow position, their debt service capacity, and their ability to fund the debt service in their normal annual budget is going to dictate the final schedule as well.
Rex? Looking at FY fifteen for Lake Taylor High School, one point six two five million dollars to complete roof replacement. We need to be careful with moving forward on that project if we're going to tear it down. And if we're going to continue the CTE.
Sorry, I just still.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Rex. Yes, hello, whoever's on the conference call? I don't think they can hear us.
I'm sending them a text.
You know who it is?
No, I'm sending them all a text.
Uh, we we can hear you all speaking through the phone here on the conference call. So you can mute, yes, you can mute your phone so that we cannot hear your conversation. Please and thank you. Go ahead, Rex, I'm sorry.
Just to repeat, we're going to allocate one point six million dollars to finish the roof replacement at Lake Taylor.
and then turn around and, um, in the foreseeable future, tear it down. I think that's not a wise expenditure of dollars.
Yeah, and I'll just dovetail that with, I think we need to look at this with a DeJean Richter on our shoulder because clearly whatever we decide to do with some facilities will impact what we do here, including, clearly Brad's talking about the CTE, but in addition, whatever else we're doing with facilities impacts what we should decide to spend on an annual basis.
Right, well, with respect to the roof at Lake Taylor, um, you might remember that we held this project off a year ago because we were headed down the road with the CTE, I mean, CTE High School. So, I mean, I've got to put it there as a placeholder in case we have to do it. But we do have that in mind that we're looking at building a new high school. So, as long as it can be, uh, maintained and, and, and keep water out of that facility, then we, we won't go into this project. You know, we've, we've diverted that money to other projects.
Okay, other questions on facilities?
What is, what's the add-on process? So, you know, obviously, uh, you all gone in and done your assessment based upon, uh, you know, requirements as you see them. But as a, as a board or as a community, um, if someone wanted to bring forward the, uh, blacktop play area at Chesterfield, it doesn't seem to be the nicest and safest, uh, place in the world. Or, uh, the playground at Monroe to support the pre-K and kindergarten programs there. I mean, how, how does that information, let's say from a building level or from the community level, get feedback to you that it factors into what you're, what you present to us? What, what is a process for that? Is that just when the public hearing occurs? Well, no, you know, in some cases, the school notifies us of these deficiencies. Other times, we can pick them up as we go from school to school on a daily basis and, uh, make our observations. And I think you're correct about Chesterfield, that blacktop probably does need to be resurfaced. And that's something that we can probably pick up in one of our pavement projects, or at least we can try to do that. You might notice that we have, uh, resurfacing, well, you won't see it in this report, but we have Booker T's parking lot ready to be resurfaced this year. Okay, all right, so we've included that in this year's funding. But that's a project that we just need to include. So, you know, if there's more of a need for that blacktop to be surfaced than some of our other projects, can we just shift the money? Yeah, I don't, I don't know, you know, and I would obviously expect the, the principal and the staff to direct that. I just know the last few times I've been there, it's just been glaring to me. It just didn't seem to be safe. And I just didn't know what that, what that process was, or for example, uh, lighting at PBM, you know, those types of things. I didn't know how they get integrated into the process for you to then determine what's a priority and what's not. Do you invite us to just share that with you or to go to the committee? How does, how does that work? Well, we do it, we actually, um, you know, have several lists of projects. I mean, we could go on forever. Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. But anything that you observe and that you notice, uh, during your travels, of course, you can make it aware of us and then we can implement those into our, our project list.
Just thinking about the box, um, looking at the amount of money that you're having to spend on, say, replacing windows and things like that. Is there any entity within the city that, um, the, the school, um, system can cooperate with to save money to get these things done? Is there, is, is there any type of partnership of, I mean, is, I'm, I'm assuming that you, you let these, you did these things out and, and I'm, I'm wondering whether there is, uh, any entity within the city itself that whereby we can cooperate with the city in getting some of these, like, flat tops, um, replaced and redone, and city builders kind of stuff all the time. Uh, are these, are there possibilities for cost savings, um, in those, in those types of arrangements?
Um, I mean, I don't think that there are. We've, uh, gone down that road before about share, uh, about sharing with the city's facilities department. And, um, to the best of my knowledge, and this happened about, I guess about three or four years ago, we couldn't find anything that they were using, maybe rather than some contracts that were outsourced that we could piggyback on that might help to save us money.
So, it's nothing there, that's what you're saying?
Right.
But this might be the opportunity for them to take a look at it, you know, if we bring them this information and add the city manager, so, well, maybe we can try to collaborate with some different entities and see, you know, because they have to replace the windows in X amount of rec centers to do one big, I'm just, I'm just-
I understand.
I was looking at this, um, report on the replacement of leechers at Lake Taylor Middle and Azalea Garden there. I was kind of amazed at the cost of that. I don't know, that sixty-nine million dollars, is that? Is that a typo? I mean, also, what are they?
No, that's, that's what the bid came in at. And then I think there's a, uh-
Sixty-nine million?
He said sixty-nine million.
Oh, no, that's a typo. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what your report is, but that's a typo. The million part is a typo. Yeah, because we, we estimated for the two schools approximately a hundred thousand and I think it came in, uh, with our, um, alternate add items to put new curtains in, in place of these folding doors that break down all the time. And I think we're just a little bit over what the hundred dollar estimate is going to be.
So, this whole thing about building fill houses, are, are we still thinking about this?
The city is still building fill houses and we're working with them on that design. Uh, that's going to be a design bill project for Booker T. and for Lake Taylor.
That's not within our budget. That's something the city's doing on their own.
Correct.
Right.
All right.
How do we, how do we plan to put this on our five-year budget, um, chart? Are we going to, are we going to present this to council and say, these are facility needs in order to maintain student achievement? Here it is. How, how are we going to present this? Because this is a big number.
It is a big number, um, it's tough. I mean, the two of board were safety and climate. Some of these are clearly safety issues and, um, all affect the climate of the teaching and learning. And, um, they're given us the facts and then we have to present the facts of the community as is. And, um, the only other category I could see being included in this personally is critical. You know, um, I think it's all important, but, but- Yeah, um, you know, how, how much of it is, is critical.
And, and let me just add on to that. What's currently deferred maintenance? What is it you're putting on here that we're still catching up from? Versus this is what you think we need to do only because it needs to happen in the future?
Everything on here that's a replacement or major repair is deferred maintenance. The only thing that's not deferred is your new construction.
Well, if that's the case, then why would we put something at fifteen, sixteen if it's not deferred, if it's deferred? Are you just spacing it out for the budget?
Because I don't see us realistically having funds to make these repairs. And so, when I look at our, when I look at our strategic plan, which runs us out to FY eighteen, then I'm trying to spread these projects around based on their need and where do I realistically think we might receive funding? Now, if you look at the total package and you're looking at three hundred and fifty-four million dollars, I mean, I can tell you that we've got any number of reports that say how much money we need throughout the district year after year after year. And you know just as well as I know that we're not going to see this funding to this level. But, you know, when you ask me what needs to be done, and keep in mind, the initial request for this report was just to say whether you would improve this facility, maintain this facility, or do otherwise. And of course, if you look at our other, it could be new construction, relocation, reconstitution and demolition. So, we have some buildings in here, if we keep looking through, that we just say, tear it down and walk away from, okay? And, um, if we were thinking about a new ocean view, then what do we do with Willoughby? And maybe we reconstitute it and maybe it's a early childhood center. I mean, so, all of those things are considered in this five-year period. But I've got to let you know the things that need to be done. What happens if they're not done? Then we continue to patch as we go. And then there are some cases or some instances where we have unforeseen problems that we've just got to make that repair. So, it could be a project that we wanted to do, like, for instance, Little Creek. We're replacing the windows and we're in the process of doing that now, but we haven't started and the project won't start until the summer. But let's say something comes up and we need that million and a half dollars, then we won't be doing windows, we'll be doing something else. And, and that'll be enough, right? And that project has been deferred for ten years, okay?
Just one more question then. So, other, under the other then, honestly, that's, other than the CTE and Maury.
And Maury.
The rest is already new construction that's already been, you know, that's being paid for otherwise. Not out of our budget.
That's right.
So, if you remove those amounts and keep in the eighty-five and the fifty-eight, your other is quite less, but considerably less than this. They really, the total truly isn't three fifty-four coming out of our budget.
Right, that's right. You're exactly right. All of this funding won't come out of our budget. But you asked me to take a look at the total picture.
But I'm just saying, if we go to city council and show them this document, they'd say, well- Yeah, we're already, uh, we're already, um, accounting for the fact that we're paying for these new constructions outside of Lake Taylor and, um, Maury.
Well, does the other include, are we, are we including in that other new construction from Maury?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, it is included, yes.
The fifty-eight, so the fifty-eight and the eighty-five are above and beyond what is already considered the five schools in five years.
Right, but then if you keep going, you still have new construction at other schools as well.
Right, so the two hundred and ninety-four million encompasses CTE, Maury and the five schools.
Right.
Okay.
So, we were back out, uh-
Back out the five schools.
Right.
And you have a different number under the other, which brings down the total.
And, and the new for, for Maury, I mean, I knew that decision had been made, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it would have been made to that actually, you know, obviously.
Right, so if you, if you, if you take out other, then you take out two hundred and ninety-four million.
Right.
But really, of the other, Lake Taylor and Maury are the ones that are not accounted for or paid for or otherwise going to be done yet. So, you got to keep eighty-five and fifty-eight in there in the other to really have a true other.
Yes.
So, it's not truly two ninety-four per se.
Right, and to, um, strengthen Rex's point, what's critical? We have to, we have to make a decision on what way we're going to go with Maury High School.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got that thing supported in areas and we have to, we have to test it every four to six months to make sure that more damage isn't occurring. And again, the longer we hold off on it, the more damage is going to go behind those walls and, and cause damage to the interior too. So, we have to make a big decision on, on what direction we want to go with that. Okay? Any other comments in this area, uh, facilities maintenance? Okay, then, uh, we will move on then to the technology.
Sorry that Dr. Stewart couldn't be here to enjoy, you know, because he wanted this report.
Well, he was, it's so hot where he is, he wouldn't have been able to hear you.